And would meet the needs of the Historic District Commission. Allen Edwin came in and attended, I think, two or three Historic District Commission meetings and kind of tweaked their designs here and there, added more windows, added more trim, did some upgrades to siding and things like that to kind of get us in the right spot. Now, those things weren't free, so they kind of moved up the cost of the houses a little bit from our standpoint, but we think we've got a point where we have nine houses that make a whole lot of sense for the Nelson neighborhood. They don't, they don't meet everybody's 100% need, so they don't meet 100% of what the Historic District maybe wanted, or 100% of what some folks in the neighborhood wanted, or 100% of what the Disability Connection folks wanted, but they do a good job of meeting the general need of the area. And they put them in a pricing standpoint that, in my opinion, from a new housing, in the new housing market, makes them very competitive with our, with our neighboring jurisdictions and neighboring communities. And I think we knew going into this that, that this would be a, a, um, a difficult investment, right? It's, it's not one that the private sector has embraced over the last 10 years because they know that there's a whole lot of unknowns and there's a whole lot of risk versus reward in building here. But I think we sold this project to ourselves, if you remember, and the initial discussions were that, hey, we need to figure out where that market is in our neighborhoods, and if anybody's ever going to figure it out, it's almost, almost has to be us up here, right? Because we have the biggest vested interest of all the private developers and, uh, and the people throughout the state. They don't have as big of an interest in seeing Muskegon kind of find that mark. And so that's why we thought it was important to come in and bring a quality build, even if it was significantly, in my opinion, significantly above what you're seeing sell in that neighborhood. We spent some time with our building inspector and we took him down with Allen Edwin folks to look at some in-process construction homes, and maybe Kirk can speak to that or not if you want him to, but we were all pretty thoroughly impressed with the quality of home, especially when you consider the quality for the, for the value or the quality for the price. And from a staff standpoint, we think that Allen Edwin will give us the biggest quality for the biggest value in these neighborhoods and will hopefully open up the door for new development, whether they be city-sponsored or with Allen Edwin or with other developers or with other folks that want to build in the community. Will at least open that door, prove that it can happen, prove that it can be successful, and prove that, that really, in my opinion, middle-income folks that had been choosing to live in the suburbs are willing to come back and live in the community that probably generations before them started out in. And I'll kind of leave it at that and, and open up the discussion.
Questions? Vice Mayor.
I, I think we've all been kicking the tires on this for a long time, and I, I'm going to say this, I've probably been kicking on the tires on this for a lot longer than most. When I bought my home on Sixth Street in 1989, so that's 26 years ago, I immediately joined my neighborhood association because I wanted to get involved. And Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association at that time was a community housing development organization, like a community encompasses now, like Habitat for Humanity and so on. We, we use MISTHA funding and HUD funding to renovate homes in the neighborhood. And something I learned very early in my association with the Neighborhood Association is we had to turn people away regularly because they made too much money to buy the homes we renovated. And that's never made sense to me. Let me repeat that. We have to turn away people who want to live in my neighborhood because they make too much money. And if we're going to be a socially and economically and racially integrated city, we have to accommodate everybody. Now, since I've been on the City Commission, she, uh, she's not here tonight, I don't see her. Anita Bailey, who is currently in charge of our Community Neighborhood Services program, and her predecessors, she's the third one I've worked with in that position, have done an excellent job, both making sure that our partners, like Community Encompass, like Habitat, are building quality homes in our community for folks of more modest means, that we build houses directly for people of more modest means, and I think they are an asset to the neighborhood and so on. Good example are the houses that are on Walton overlooking the side of the former farmer's market. But again, we have to turn away people because they make too much money. So we're accommodating people who maybe can't go and get a standard mortgage, or maybe can't pay a higher price, and as a result, a lot of those people who may want to be in Muskegon end up going elsewhere because they want new construction. I have a passion for older homes, that's why I bought one, but that's not for everybody. Not everybody wants to deal with all that. And what we're missing in our core neighborhoods is that market rate new construction. It's not the only thing we're missing, we're missing market rate apartments as well, but we're missing that market rate, single-family home construction to fill in where we've lost homes through neglect over the years, that we've had to take down because they've become a blight. Or in this particular instance, where we lost a core institution in our neighborhood, which was St. Joseph Church. So to see this program that is appropriate for the neighborhood, the houses are similar in size and scale and mass and setting to the other houses in the immediate area, that the Historic District Commission didn't just rubber stamp, we went through home by home and reviewed, and when we didn't have schematics that showed all four exterior sides of every home, we said, come back and these are the things we want to see, and they came back. And they had the changes requested. And after that thorough review, which includes a licensed architect who's very familiar with the state and federal Historic District guidelines, we approved this at the Historic District Commission. These are appropriate designs for our neighborhood. They will be an asset to our community. People will buy them. We know because we've spent 26 years turning people away who want to live in our neighborhood, and we have to say no because you make too much money. Well, we won't have to say no anymore. And then we start adding that customer base, so it's easier to make money as a small business in downtown Muskegon. We have people who are going to patronize these downtown businesses because they're here, and those businesses are closest. We're going to make it easier to attract more businesses because as retailers look at the area, they're going to say, well, there's more people, and there's more people who can afford to buy stuff. We're going to improve the property values of people in the immediate area, because instead of a vacant lot that has been a source of trouble in the past, because there are no eyes on that, because it's empty, now there will be homes that have set the value for the rest of the immediate area in that neighborhood. And those homes won't be out of the price range of what you'll see a few blocks north with Heritage Town Square, or houses on Webster, or houses on Jefferson, a few blocks south. So I think we need to embrace this, I think we need to show the private sector that they ought to be doing this on their own dime. I think these houses are the right houses, they're in the right location, now's the time to do it, and I have every expectation these houses will sell, and we will add good neighbors to the good neighbors who are already in the neighborhood, and we will continue to move forward in a positive way. And while we may not make a profit on the sale of each individual home, we will generate property taxes, where currently we get very little. We will generate income taxes, where currently we get none, and the whole city will benefit from that revenue generated. And it will help make our discussions as we talk about how do we pay for things next year and the year after and the year after that, an easier discussion to have. And just remember, grandma won't be priced out of her house because thanks to Proposal A, even if her, her, her house doubled in value next year, the price of what she's taxed on can only go up at the rate of inflation, or 5%, which is ever less, and right now the rate of inflation is about 1% per year. So the worst effects of gentrification, where people who've lived in the neighborhood for a long time are priced out of their homes, doesn't really exist in Michigan, thanks to Proposal A. So I hope all of you embrace this as well, it's, it's got compromises in it, so it's not 100% of any one person wants, but I think, I think we should vote yes on this and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner German?
Yeah, I'm in consensus with you also, Vice Mayor, you made some good points, and this is one of the things that I was supportive of, and when I talked to the manager, even before he became the city manager, how would you revitalize these urban communities and make them more vibrant? And Frank came up with an excellent plan, and we talked, had discussions, and I think this is a starting point in developing these, redeveloping these communities, to add some tax base, but, you know, give the citizens a sustainable homes and deliverability where they can actually be in a, a good community and help that community grow. As for, you know, spending money downtown, hopefully, you know, that will happen as well, but I just want you to know, excellent job Frank, I'm in support of this, and let's move forward.
Commissioner Johnson?
Could we hear from Allen Edwin? Well, Allen Edwin or the Realtor, I know we have, where are any of the neighbors?
Yeah, if I could say, I think we have Mary Jamison here, we have some folks from Allen Edwin, and I'm, and I see Dolly, who's a neighbor, and I think there are a few people here that might be willing to speak if, if you guys would.
Why don't you take her from here and call them up?
Okay. Oh, who'd you like to hear from first, the residents, or the, or you want to, why don't we ask the neighbors if there are any neighbors that would like to speak? Come on up and tell us what you guys think and...
You want to come on up, Dolly?
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Dolly.
I need your name, your address, and your credit card, because I'm getting hungry, and you can take me out to dinner.
Hello, Dolly. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to listen to these plans, and I am full support of it. I've been in the neighborhood for 36 years, and I'm, I'm, I miss St. Joseph Park, St. Joseph Church and all of that, but it's time for us to go forward. I would love to have neighbors next door to me, I would love to have more people that love my, my area as, as much as we love it. I love Muskegon, that's why I'm here. And so I, I just can't support it enough, and I think it's the right time to do it, and I look forward to seeing these beautiful homes go up. I've taken pictures to go in my scrapbook, so like I said, this used to be, okay? But it's a pleasure to see the city, and I'm just real pleased to see the leadership in this area. Thank you for choosing St. Joseph Park area to start, and I believe that we'll all go forward together. Thank you.
Thanks, Dolly. Thank you.
And I'd just like to point out that Dolly was gracious enough to give up her nice double lot over there so that we could fit one more house on, actually two more houses on that side of the block, and we're really grateful for that.
Well, time doesn't have to mull it.
What?
Are there any other folks from the neighborhood, or generally?
Well, there's quite a few.
But they don't have to speak.
Only if you want to. Would you like to?
I support.
Okay.
Dave Gregerson.
Dave, we could just get your name and your address, just for the record.
It's Dave Gregerson, I live at 241 West Muskegon Avenue. I'm new to Muskegon, I've only been here six years, and, and I love the community, I think it's a great community. I moved here from the Sagatuck area. I'm a Realtor, I've designed and built many homes. I like this plan. There, I'd like to see, I'd like to see this happen, I think it will be a real spark to the community, especially with what's going on in other parts of town that houses are selling. Cities all over are improving their blighted areas. The economy is good, and I think now is the time to strike. Even if there were deficiencies in what was being, what was designed, I believe the time wasted in trying to, to, to do something different would do just that, would just waste time. I think because the economy is good, this is the time to move. We don't know what's going to happen two years down the road. I, I have been close to the edge of an opponent to this since I heard about it. I attended those historic meetings, historic commission meetings, and what I, what I saw is, I saw great improvements made from that point to this point. So I believe it will, will enhance everyone's property value, the very first house that sells in that development will help the entire city. And pretty much ditto to what, what Larry S. Pitaro said, so.
How long you been here, Dave?
Six years.
Six years. You've, you've never tagged me to say hello. Let's see you at the produce section in Myers.
Sounds good.
Okay. I, I hadn't been able to do it six years ago, but I'll do it now, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do you want to hear from Allen Edwin folks?
The realtor?
Yeah, Mary, was there anything that you wanted to add, or any comments you wanted to give, such as you sat here for the last two hours, two and a half hours?
It's all good.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, I'm Mary Jamison, I live at 1478 Leahy Street, I am a Realtor promoting Muskegon, and I am an active Realtor in this county, I work for Jay Neto Realtor. I also represent Heritage Square Town Homes, so I'm actually dealing with the boots on the ground who are coming to look at the city and want to live downtown, and I think it's very exciting. I think the price point is good, I think it's going to be very attractive to all age groups, and everybody from a first-time home buyer to an empty nester. And with the work I've been doing at Heritage Square Town Homes, and because the city was gracious enough to help jumpstart that again after the recession, there has been such an influx of interest, there's so many people interested in living downtown and wanting to be a part of it, and I think this is very exciting. I think it's wonderful. So I think we, we can rock it.
Thanks, Mary.
If I may ask, Mary? Can you answer a question of mine?
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you for coming tonight, speaking and fielding questions. In your experience with the Heritage Town Square project, people that are looking at those homes, maybe it's outside of the price range, they're, they're really interested in downtown, but there's not really an alternative outside of the townhomes from them, if that's outside of the price range, so you see this project is filling that gap?
I really do. A lot of people come to Heritage Square, and yes, it's a slightly higher price point at Heritage Square, but the thing that I hear is, oh, well, I have to give up my yard, I'd really like to have a yard, I'd really, you know, and yes, I'd like to live downtown, but everything's so old, I don't have the time to rehab a house. It's, the trend is more towards our, we're all so busy now, that the trend is kind of getting away from rehabbing a house, and more towards, gee, I'd just like to move into something and order all my furniture from Pottery Barn and live the perfect life. And you can do it now with a new house, you know, at Midtown Square, or at Heritage Square.
Very nice. So you, so you are bullish on this project?
Well, I should hope so.
Is that what you call it?
I should hope so, no. As a city dweller, I bought an old house, and I absolutely love that these gentlemen are here, because of course, they have rehabbed beautiful old apartment building, and they bought a wonderful old home, and I'm, I'm just thrilled to see them here. Unfortunately, not everybody is able or willing to rehab, and I think building new is, is just great. And as I said, the traffic is increasing. I, so often, I get calls and emails regarding Heritage Square Town Homes, and they're saying, we've been coming to festivals for years and saying, why don't we live here? And more and more people are thinking, you know what, I want to live here now, I want to be able to walk to these festivals, I want to be able to be right here, I want to have my breakfast at Carmen's, drop the mail off, and, and ride my bike to work, you know? Boat's in the water just a few blocks away, great, it's all good.
Anything else for Mary?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Who else can we have?
We can have folks from Allen Edwin, if they'd like to come on up and just answer any questions, or talk about, if you have questions about the building process, and maybe the timeframe, which we're starting to, you know, assume an approval today, we're starting to really get excited about how quickly these things are going to go up, maybe you can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Mike McGivney with Allen Edwin Homes, this is Jim Burns with Allen Edwin Homes as well. Mary, couldn't say any better with the enthusiasm and Tom and Dolly, it's been a pleasure, hopefully to be your new neighbors, so we're excited about that as well. Yeah, we're excited about the opportunity here for the nine homes, we also excited about the opportunity for this may become later on with the additional home sites that are within the city as well. So we're very vested, very excited about the opportunity for the, the beginning of the project, and I'll let Jim talk a little bit about the, the start of it. We've undertaken a lot of time and energy to get to this point, to, to also get to a quick start as well, so I'll let Jim kind of talk to that real quick.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks. Yeah, so, Dolly, you mentioned you had a camera ready, so I would, I would make sure you got your camera ready really quickly, because one of the things we've talked about is timing, and you guys talked about the economy and how this is the right time, and so, working with Frank, we, we really targeted that we needed to get these homes completed in the spring. The spring market, as you know, in the real estate business, is, is huge, so we wanted to go in and, and not just do one at a time, we wanted to go in and really kind of have this event that Frank talked about, and so, literally, if we get approval tonight, I think Frank, you said the building permits would be ready to go.
Yeah, already done that.
So what we're going to do is bring in and dig and put in all nine basements, literally, in the first week, so I would see next week putting in nine basements, and then we'll come in and have a couple framing crews that'll go right down the line and frame them. We see having these things dried in during the month of December, starting mechanicals in January, and I think that we will see these things start to complete in April and May, and we'll be ready to go for the spring market. So there's going to be a lot of stuff going on, a lot of traffic, a lot of sticks and bricks flying up, but I think it's going to be a really exciting time for everybody.
Excellent to hear. Any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you. Mike, thank you, gentlemen. And by the way, I really like your windows, I, I really do. When I toured the homes, the way you do windows, that, that was one of the big sale points, you know, to me. You know, each, each one, you know, framed individually, it was just really, really impressive.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I would like to thank Allen Edwin for your time coming through tonight, meeting with the Historic District Commission, with opening up a spec home for a tour of Realtors, of commission, of NIMs, or Nelson neighbors there, and you've, you've been responsive to, to staff and neighbors and concerns, I do appreciate that. It's helped improve my comfort level as well with this project, because one of the things that was holding me back or giving me significant reservation was the fact that this project was a no-bid project, that we didn't do an RFP and we didn't do a bid, and I raised those concerns with, with Frank, and have been back and forth about that, and I'm appreciative that we are reviewing, that we did have a chance to review the contract before signing off on it, so I'm thankful for that. And Frank has addressed my concerns about it being a no, no-bid contract. We, it's kind of hard, this is a novel concept for, for our community, for, for our city, first time we've ever done something of this magnitude with our home infill projects, and there wasn't exactly a bid process in place like this to do, and we had reached out to some other developers and there just wasn't interest. Allen Edwin stepped up, was interested in it, has been very helpful and collaborative throughout the process, and so we have got, we have gotten assurances that down the road there'll be greater interest in a bid, and we can seek out a bid, hopefully you'll apply for that bid as well when we do the future homes. We, as Frank mentioned earlier, the idea, and I'm supportive of this project, of the concept, I've been supportive of this concept of our home infill project in the beginning, we've talked about this for about a year or so, and as Frank mentioned, the idea about this is to recycle the money back into this project. Taking this initial, initial money, a good chunk of it had come from a dividend that we received that we put into our public improvement fund. And so we took this, this, I don't want to say, this, yeah, I don't want to say windfall, but this, this one-time money that, that came up, and we are utilizing it, investing it into, to our community, and recycling that money back into the project to build more homes, build more homes, build more homes. Frank had done up a pro forma for the commissioners to look at how that would pan out of recycling that money back into the program, how many houses we ended up being able to build, what our tax generation's going to be, both from a city income tax generation and from a property tax standpoint. this is needed. As we can see, our citizens are averse to raising taxes. We've talked about assess, a special assessment at multiple levels for streetlights, for our bid, we talked about road millages, we went for a four mil last year that was going to go towards our streets and our streetlights, as well as some other general fund, to help relieve the pressure on our general fund for those four mills. Citizens rejected that, citizens do not want us to increase taxes, yet we still have considerable pressures on our budget. And one way to help alleviate that pressure is by creating new sources of revenue. And one way to do that is to attract new residents, build these new homes, modern homes, modern amenities that appeal to new residents, hopefully professional class that will have higher incomes, so that we can get the city income taxes and help stabilize the neighborhood, improve property values in the surrounding area, thus increasing more tax revenues for our cities. So it's just a, given they're having a hard time raising taxes, this is one way to help relieve that pressure. It is not without risk, that is for sure, but I think nothing ventured, nothing gained. I also believe that perfection can be the enemy of the good. This is not perfect. I did have reservations about the bid that have been addressed, I also had reservations about the price, as the price has increased over the year. As the Realtor indicated, that there is an interest in that, also looking at homes selling nearby, as the mayor, or the vice mayor actually pointed out, you look at Jefferson, you look at Muskegon and Webster, and you're looking downtown with the Heritage Town, you're looking at Terrace Point, houses are selling in this price range or higher, so I don't think it's outside of the realm of possibility that we can sell these homes for the $160,000 to $190,000 range in this neighborhood. And I think it's an excellent starting point for the project. We talked about NIMs, we talked about Jackson Hill, we talked about North Nelson, and I definitely agree that North Nelson's the best place to start. I think these homes are, the design is probably better suited for Jackson Hill or NIMs personally, that's just my personal opinion. I would refer to something a little bit more, a little bit more urban design fitting, a little less suburban, but it is what it is, and I understand that these designs help give us the economy the scale and bring, keep those costs down to the greatest extent possible. And so there are trade-offs, there are trade-offs. Like I said, can't let perfect be the enemy of the good, I am in support of this, it will help increase our tax base, helps improve our housing selection, the diversity of our housing selection, it's certainly is going to attract new people, people that are going to spend money downtown, so we're going to be seeing additional revenue from sales tax potentially. It's going to foster economic development, help stabilize, and I'm supportive of this. I had reservations, I, as you guys know...
Hey, wait, how you going with this?
I've talked to you guys about this in the past, and I've had, had my reservations, I've been generally supportive of the concept, but I've had some reservations about this specific project and the details, but I've worked through a lot of those, and I'll be keeping them in mind as we move forward, but I, I'm supportive of this.
Talking about reservations, I had them at eight o'clock.
So you're bullish?
I'm bullish. Bullish on Muskegon. Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners?
I support it.
I'd like you to flesh that out.
I think we're good.
Okay. I think the most exciting thing about this project is it goes to show that we're not up here sitting on our thumbs. We're accused often of not being progressive or forward-thinking, or how come you guys don't put your money where your mouth is? Well, we are. And I have no doubt that with this program, we're going to give the hipshins and flowers, new neighbors, good neighbors, dedicated Muskegon... new neighbors, good neighbors, dedicated Muskegonites, even came in, you know, six years ago. And I think that's where the real value is. Neighbors, people that share a cup of coffee, you know, across the lawn. You know, those are beautiful things and we'll experience that. And we'll be a success with this. And then we'll go to the eastern edge of Willie's Ward to Jackson Hill, a budding Commissioner Wood's, Hood's Ward. And then, if successful, we'll give Ken some new neighbors up in NIMs. I think it'll be all good. It'll be all good. So in the meantime, let's all hold hands, be the best neighbors that we can be, cherish each other, treat each other well. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Ritz and Masiviga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Hot dang, let's, let's pour some foundation. Very good. Thank you. Chief? You wanted to touch on snow and cars and parking and...
Very quickly, for all the residents in the city of Muskegon, December 15th, we will start our winter parking ban. Actually, it's our winter parking plan. By that time, on that date, you can no longer park in the street from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., but you can retreat to the terrace and park on that grassy area between the sidewalk and the curb line. We will during the Christmas season, if someone does make a mistake or violate that, that ordinance, we will issue a red courtesy tag, instruct to them that the winter parking ban is in place, like we did last year. And then, once January starts, we will actually issue violations. One thing we're also gonna add to it this year is if someone forgets and they park in their front or side yard during the Christmas season, we're also gonna give them just an orange tag to remind them to retreat to the terrace or park in the street unless it's 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. If there's any questions, let me know. But that is gonna be in place starting December 15th.
So that's December 15th it begins?
December 15th until the last day of February is when we do our winter parking ban.
Chief, is that December 15th when you start issuing citations or is that more?
Well, we could issue by the ordinance, but we're not going to. We're gonna do what we did last year. We're gonna issue just a red courtesy tag on your windshield, just indicating that the winter parking ban is in place, but after the holiday seasons come, January, we will start issuing the tickets. We want them to know that. We don't want them to hold out until January and make a mistake, but we will issue the, the red tickets to get everyone used to the fact that we've switched to the winter parking ban.
And Chief, we talked about this too. We have some folks that are habitually, from December 15th through the end of the year, they might not get 10 warnings, correct?
Right.
They might eventually convert some of those into tickets.
Right. If the officers know that they've issued more than one of these courtesy warnings, a resident may be issued a ticket under the ordinance. We didn't really see that last year. Once they got a warning or two, they did follow the winter parking ban by retreating up to the terrace and parking in that grassy area. And also that, you know, if we do have a significant snow event, I talked to Mo today and I've, I've talked to our city manager, that we will discuss the, the snow emergency declaration. God forbid we ever got a storm that serious, we'd have to ask the mayor to do a declaration. But that is a secondary piece put in place in case we have a significant snowfall like they did down in Hallow last weekend, 15 inches.
Right. Well, just text me when I'm in bed and I'll do it.
Yes, sir.
You've sent all the, this notification to all the neighborhood associates.
Well, we're starting right now. We started today by doing a NEXO message. Ms. Mesh jumped right on it and put it on our Facebook where we have almost 16,000 people now. We're going to do a media release tomorrow. I will be contacting NIMs and we will just continue this until December 15th.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you all too.
My best to your bride.
Any other business, gentlemen? Commissioner Hood?
Public comment. There's nothing else.
Oh, 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 public comments. Allen!
I made it to the end.
Oh, you won a prize. Here, come get a recess.
I will.
Okay, Commissioner Hood, now take us home.
Then if there's...
I'm a supporter. All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, get out of here.